Collecting canned goods and non-perishable items to help families in need. We always want to give back to our families. And then I do have some highlights with celebrating excellence in education. To our Principal of the Year, Patrick Spangler. Our Middle School Veteran Teacher of the Year, Sarah Dodson. Middle School Novice Teacher of the Year, April Richmond. Elementary Veteran Teacher of the Year, Marie Johnson. Elementary Novice Teacher of the Year, Chloe Mays. High School Veteran Teacher of the Year, Lisa Linderman. High School Novice Teacher of the Year, Madison Mantooth. To all of these exceptional leaders, we say thank you and appreciate all of your service and the fact that you will go on to represent us. Madam Chair, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
And now we're looking at Walker Valley's golf team?
We are. That's our next one, but I needed to see if y'all had any questions about that one.
Did anyone have any questions?
Are we going to talk about them later?
No, we are.
We're talking about them right now.
So our next, I would like to recognize the Walker Valley High School Principal, Dr. Jones, to come forward and talk to us about the Walker Valley's Golf Team State Competition.
So we're now going to talk about the golf team here. So I'm going to ask for our golf team to step forward here. Also, our coaches, Coach Campbell, Coach Frazier. I'm going to ask also Joanne Gott to come up here with me. And also our Athletic Director, Coach Turner. Come on up here, Coach Turner. He's not one that likes the spotlight. We're going to brag on them here for just a second, and we're extremely proud of two big accomplishments that have taken place. And so first, I'd like to celebrate our Walker Valley High School Golf Team for an incredible accomplishment. As it's already been mentioned, they finished third in the state in T double S double A State Tournament. This is an excellent group of student athletes that have shown tremendous dedication, skill, and teamwork all season long. And their hard work truly paid off on the biggest stage. We're proud of them at Walker Valley for showing their competitiveness and Mustang pride. And also, congratulations to our coaches. I'm going to call their name, and if you just kind of raise your hand so they know who you are. We have Harrison Yost, Drew Thompson, Malachi Maples, Luke Fennell, and Cody Walter. And so can we give them a big round of applause? And so along with that, we have another pretty big accomplishment that we'd like to celebrate. So Cody Walter was the number one in all of the state. I'm going to let Coach Campbell speak here in just a minute, but from what Coach Campbell was explaining to me, for our golf team, the score that they reached this year, if they had had that team score last year, they would have finished first, correct, Coach Campbell?
Pretty close.
Pretty close. And then on top of that, I believe Cody is our first person ever out of Bradley County and Cleveland Cities to finish number one in the state in golf.
Yay.
Another very interesting dynamic to this, and I think is a compliment to Bradley County Schools, is that Cody is a part of our virtual school program. So, Ms. Gott, where are you at? She's down here. And so we want her to be a part of this. We like the way that we're collaborating together. We're creating opportunities for our students to succeed. I think also it's a testimony to our board that we take time to do this. But to our golf team, we're very proud of you. And for Cody, and then I'm going to let Coach Campbell just share a quick word.
Coach Campbell, could you introduce the rest of your coaches, please?
Oh, yes, ma'am. So it's me, Will Campbell, and then Monty Frazier. We coach. And we have the girls' team as well, boys' and girls' teams. So it's the two of us out there. And just, I don't have a nice speech prepared, like, I'm going to just wing it. But just want to say how proud we are of these guys. And like you were saying, I mean, it was our, it's, we finished third in the state before as a team in the history of the school. And we've had a lot of pretty rich history of golf at Walker Valley over the years. But this was by far our lowest team total. I mean, our team total was probably seventeen shots lower than what we've shot previously. So this team is a really solid team, great young men, great golfers, but on top of that, great young men. And the best thing is, this is our oldest member of the team right here, and he's a junior. So all these guys are going to be back. We've got juniors, sophomore, 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 freshmen. So, you know, these guys will be back and able to compete some more. And that's exciting for me and Coach Frazier, obviously, you know, just to get to watch these guys compete and do what they do. But for Cody to win is really impressive, and this is kind of cool. I wasn't sure if he was the first one ever to win a golf state championship of any kind. From, I mean, Bradley County or Cleveland City, there's never been a golf state champion in this area, team or individual. But I Googled it, actually ChatGPT'd it, so it's kind of cool. And it's just like, yes, Cody Walter, 2025. You're the guy that pops up whenever you ChatGPT that. So that's really cool, I think. And just like I said, these guys support him too. Golf's a, you know, you go there as a team, but you're playing as individuals. But these guys really come together and kind of root for each other and constantly like, you know, all day long there, how's Cody playing? How's Cody playing? Because they knew he had a shot to win the whole thing. And just to see them support him, and as he did that, was cool. So appreciate the board. Thank you for honoring us and having us out here and just kind of spotlighting what these guys do. I mean, I'd like to take a lot of credit for it, me and Coach Frazier, but obviously, we just hand out Gatorades and fruit snacks. They put in a lot of hard work, and it shows up, you know, in moments like this. So just thankful to be a part of it.
So in all this youth, with freshmen, sophomore, juniors, that's not much pressure, guys, for next year at all?
They love pressure. They love pressure. If they didn't, they wouldn't play golf, that's for sure. Coach, you want to say anything?
No, I'm just very proud of them. I wish that I could just come close to them.
You can shoot it on the front nine usually. Anyway, thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe turn around this way.
And we'll take.
Yeah, cluster.
Also, just, we got this plaque that we'll keep at the schools that just has the accomplishment. We'll have this in our trophies basis to highlight him and his accomplishment.
Can I actually go right over there so that way you can get a better shot?
Sure.
Hey, why did he, why did you shoot a watch of wanting state championship?
I shot six hundred for today.
Wow, that's impressive.
Pretty impressive.
Really good.
It's pretty impressive.
Who was a senior, by the way? Anyway, impressive.
See all your face.
That is pretty awesome. Just got three more years to win it, too.
Two smiles?
Jeez.
One more? Great, thank you.
So proud of you. Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, madam.
Our next item of business is request for changes to Charleston Elementary's digital sign, Allison Bynum.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Cash, and Board members. I am here to formally request permission to replace the existing school sign located at the front of Charleston Elementary near the main roadway. Our current sign has served our school community for many years, but is now inoperable and beyond reasonable repair. Due to its age and the difficulty in maintaining its functionality, it no longer effectively communicates important information or represents our pride and visibility within the school community. Through successful fundraising efforts, all necessary funds for this replacement project have already been secured. This proposal is not a request for district funding, but rather for approval to move forward with the installation of a new functional and updated sign that aligns with our district guidelines and enhances the appearance and communication capabilities of our campus. The new sign will be placed in the same location as the current one, ensuring that no changes to the existing site layout or electrical connections, excuse me, beyond what is required for proper installation. We hope that you will consider this request, and we respectfully seek the board's approval to proceed with replacing the existing school sign at no cost to the district.
Do I have a motion to approve the replacement of the existing school sign at Charleston Elementary?
I'm moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kason. Any discussion, questions for Ms. Bynum?
That's awesome.
Liz, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Alan Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Goins?
Yes.
Ms. Vicki Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Casey?
Yes.
Seven yeses, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bynum, I know that this is your first year.
Yes, ma'am.
As the principal at Charleston. And I've been hearing great things, so congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Thank you, board.
Our next item is a request for bus transfer routes, Terry McElhaney.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Now, I come to you to ask that we transfer Route 29 from Teresa Phillips to Crystal Redmer. Ms. Redmer has been in the busing industry for many years. She has been vetted. We feel that her and her husband, both are bus drivers, would be great people to add to the family of contractors that we have. So tonight, I seek to transfer Route 29 from Teresa Phillips to Crystal Redmer with your permission.
Do I have a motion?
Effective November the 21st.
Yeah, good. Do I have a motion to approve the transfer of ownership for bus route 29 from Phillips to Redmer, effective November the 21st?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the transfer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Mr. McElhaney? Liz, will you call the roll?
Ms. Nancy Kason?
Yes.
Ms. Vicki Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Alan Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Goins?
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero noes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, board.
Madam Chair, Mr. McElhaney, would you stay for just a moment, please? Sometimes I think that we often don't say how much we appreciate some of the work that all of y'all do. And I wanted to publicly say how much I appreciate you and the work you do in the Transportation Department, not only in keeping our buses rolling, but building relationships with people, and also just knowing that the safety of those kids coming and going, and always being there, getting up at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning to check and see. And I just think sometimes we need to know, it's not an easy job, but your heart is in it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, I'm very humbled.
Our next item is an update on Big City University funding, Melissa Presswood.
Good evening. So I would like to give you an update on the funding for Big City University. BCU has supported Bradley County students and families for over twenty years. We serve nearly three hundred students each year with academic tutoring, enrichment, and family engagement. The program is funded through the Twenty First Century Community Learning Centers grant. This summer, the federal government paused funding nationwide for an administrative review. Our funding resumed, but our award was reduced by over ninety-five thousand dollars. We scaled back operating costs to maintain the core services, but we still face a shortfall of fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. This covers transportation from each elementary school to the BCU site. We've already applied for a grant to cover this gap and are seeking additional resources, but grants are competitive, and so they're not guaranteed. If additional grant funding is not secured by the December board meeting, we may have to present a budget amendment to the school board's consideration.
Any questions, comments? And the shortfall again is?
Fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars.
And you can bring that to the board in December regarding whether or not you received additional funding?
Correct. We're waiting to hear back on a grant that we've applied for.
Okay.
Just, just one thing, it's, most all of the schools in Bradley County are participating in this, aren't they?
Yes, all of the elementary schools.
I mean, I know the answer to this, that's why I asked you, but there are several kids that are involved in this. I mean, this touches a lot of lives. There's a lot of families in our community that really depend on it.
Yes, absolutely. We serve nearly three hundred students every day, and they do depend on this for after-school care. It's more than just after-school childcare, it's the tutoring and the enrichment opportunities as well that BCU provides.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, do you know when you will hear from the grant, whether it has been approved or not?
We do not. It's a private foundation, and we're just waiting to hear back as they review their grants.
Okay, so once, once we know, we would be prepared to request funds, and we would know what line item we were requesting that from in the December meeting, correct?
That is correct.
But that does not leave a gap from now until December, I want to be sure.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have a question, Ms. Vicki.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So is the fifty-one thousand shortfall through this year?
Yes, it is through this current school year.
So we technically don't know what about, anything about next year?
We have not heard back. We're waiting for the federal government to finalize the federal budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Our next item, bids, lease of welding cylinders and gas services at Pi, Brittany Cannon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So on October the 18th, a legal notice was placed in the Chattanooga Times, and then on October 23rd and 25th, it was placed in the Cleveland Daily Banner. In addition, it was placed on the website and then Facebook. And an email was sent to CNC Oxygen, Holston Gases, and Air Gas, all companies that supply equipment for the welding program of study. We received four bids. The bid was opened on October the 31st, and as you can see, it was between the last two, Holston and CNC Oxygen. Jeremy Siegel, my welding teacher, reviewed all bids for service and delivery, and based on bid prices, services, reliability, and delivery, we would like to recommend CNC Oxygen to serve as a cylinder and gas provider at Pi until November 2028.
Do I have a motion to approve CNC Oxygen to serve as the cylinder and gas provider for the Pi Center until November of 28? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Questions, discussion, comments?
I was just going to ask one question. So are these prices per fill, is that, are those fixed prices for the next three years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Liz, will you call the roll?
Ms. Vicki Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Kason?
Yes.
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Alan Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Goins?
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero noes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business will be findings and recommendations for legal services, Amanda Lee. Before Ms. Lee starts, each board member received a packet prior to the meeting regarding information for attorney selection, which included proposals, a recommendation letter, and an attorney evaluation. After conferring with TSBA, our process will include multiple options. The board will have two choices to determine who to retain for legal counsel, which requires a vote. Then a second vote to officially retain this individual. So Ms. Lee?
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Mr. Bryson and myself was appointed to evaluate the school board attorney selection. And so Mr. Bryson and I are pleased to report that we have completed our review of the qualifications that were submitted in response to our request for, for our request for qualifications. We had four applicants, which were Scott Bennett of Bennett Endicamp, Chuck Cagle of Lewis Thompson, Sam Jackson of Spencer Fane, and Roy Roman of RMR Legal. The committee conducted a thorough and transparent evaluation process consistent with board policy. Evaluation criteria included education and background, relevant education experience in education law, understanding of Tennessee's school district operations, ability to provide proactive, solution-oriented counsel to the board, accessibility and responsiveness, fee structure, as well as feedback from references and from school district feedback. The committee structured the evaluation into five distinct categories, rating each scale on a one to four, with one representing the lowest score and four representing the highest. The categories were, category one was education and background, category two was relevant education experience, three was accessibility and responsiveness, category four was proposed fees and rates, and category five was references and school district feedback. The overall results resulted in Chuck Cagle with a nineteen, Scott Bennett with a sixteen, Sam Jackson with a fifteen, and Roy Roman with a ten. After careful review and deliberation, the committee has narrowed the recommendations down to two candidates based on their extent of experience in school law, strong record of supporting boards and governance matters, commitment to timely effectiveness and communication, and their overall reputation. The committee recommends the two finalists for consideration as Chuck Cagle and Scott Bennett. We believe that either of these candidates would provide a competent and legal professional representation to the board, and the committee respectfully submits these two candidates for the board's review. So I would like to go back to each category and just make sure, because under each category, in the recommendation letter, you've got the scoring for each attorney under the category. So I'll just go back through those, and if anybody has any questions on the scoring, we'll do that before I make my motion. The first category was education and background. Are there any questions or comments related to that? If not, the second category was relevant educational law experience.
This, this, we might not know that. We're not talking about where they went to school, we're talking about their experience in education law, not where they went to law school.
That's correct. The category one has to do with their regular education there when they passed the actual bar association, and as far as how long they've been in to being an attorney. Category two was specifically related to education law and practicing education law and what their experience were in that. And that, that entailed, you know, how many school districts do they represent? What, how long have they actually practiced education law and things of that nature? Some, there was one attorney who did not practice, had never practiced education law, for example. So we scored it based on that.
That was category two?
Yes.
Okay, so it says that Mr. Cagle represents sixty-one public schools, and he also represents Cleveland City, doesn't he?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. Category three was accessibility and responsiveness. Any questions on that one? And then category four was proposed fees and rates. And then the last one was references. And those references, those references also included, there was a list of references that were mentioned from school district employees in one of the packets, and we contacted every single one of those people to get their feedback, as well as, you know, multiple other ones within the district. So if there are no more questions, then at this time, I would like to make a motion for the board to select legal counsel, voting between Chuck Cagle and Scott Bennett, the two candidates recommended by Mr. Bryson and myself.
My second.
Okay, so that is a motion with the recommendation that we retain Scott Bennett or Chuck Cagle as the attorney, from Ms. Lee and a second from Mr. Bryson. Do I have any additional questions or discussion regarding Mr. Cagle or Mr. Bennett?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Fantastic work.
Absolutely.
Fantastic work done, for sure.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive.
We tried to be as, I mean, they're all great attorneys, there's no doubt about it. It boils down to what is the best fit for us. I like them all, so we tried to be as objective as possible, just reporting on the information that was given to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I don't, I don't know if it's time to say it or not, but Scott Bennett, he's a good lawyer or whatever, but Chuck Cagle was a lawyer for the board when I was principal. And I might know, you could ask, but any of these people, I've got people support, but I was always under impression from everybody I ever talked to, that if you could get Chuck Cagle to represent you in a case, you needed to go for it. It's just people that I know and principals and whatever. The ones I knew, they thought he was the best lawyer. They wondered why we got rid of him before, or changed lawyers before. But Scott Bennett is also an excellent lawyer, and I'm sure Sam Jackson, he's a good lawyer, a really good lawyer. The Roy Roman, he just didn't, he hadn't, he might be the best defense lawyer or whatever kind of law, he just hadn't done a lot of education law yet, yet. Of course, he's got to get experience sometime.
Okay, anything else?
I think my only concern would be that Cagle represents sixty-two different school districts, and Bennett is only fifteen. So it's like, does he have too many irons in the fire to represent one more school district? So that would be my only concern, is he going to give us the assistance that we need when we need it? Is he going to be too busy?
That is a very valid question, and that was one of the things we asked. And I think if it's under the evaluation part, which we weighed that into, is the support staff that they had to back up, you know, the, if we can't get him immediately, who are we going to be able to have? And he has four, I think it is, let me make sure that I'm, one.
I know he has different locations.
One, two, three, four. He has five supporting attorneys that specialize in education law. And Scott, Mr. Bennett, has one, Mary DeCamp, which everyone seems to love her as well. So, I mean, that, that's kind of like, a very valid question, but that was one of why we noted that he had four, four to five people for backup.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryson?
I don't want to kiss and tell or whatever, but we've had meetings before about questions about lawyers. I have to be honest with you, the only person, Mr. Smith was not on the board at that time, so I'm not even, but everybody on this board, everybody here, that's all I heard was want to change lawyers and reasons why. I don't, I can live with whoever I get, but I'm telling you, the people, you said stand up, if you were for it before, when we were going, you ought to be for it or against it now. And like I said, Mr. Smith wasn't here, and I'm sure he'll vote what he thinks, but I'm just telling you, I would have thought it'd be hundred to one for one person, the way we've talked about in the past.
Yes.
We're not talking behind closed doors, we're talking in meetings.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Just to clarify, this is just to give us the opportunity to make a motion to pick between these two?
Yes.
So this vote is just saying that these two are on the list, or they were recommended by the committee?
Well, when Liz calls the roll, you will either vote for Scott Bennett or Chuck Cagle. You're given two options.
Two options.
And that's why we have to come back. Well, that, yes, after we approve.
The only concern, I guess, that I have is with Mr. Cagle, I think he's an excellent attorney, comes highly recommended, but with him also representing Cleveland City, do we not have litigation with Cleveland City from time to time? It just looks like that would be a conflict.
Not that I've ever known of any litigation with Cleveland City schools as far as the board, I don't know, not since I've been on the board.
Well, this says the district. I mean, I know like with instances of, you know, if a student were going to one school out of zone, was told they had to go back to another, to their school that they were zoned for, but one was in the city, one was in the county, then that would create an issue because by law, you have to maintain that student for a year, for the calendar year. So I know that there's been some question, am I correct, Dr. Cash, on that?
In having that conversation with the attorney, because he does have a depth of attorneys, he would... If there was a conflict of interest, he would make that known to us and make a recommendation for someone else in his... Either someone else or another attorney to take over.
Would it be the same firm representing?
Not necessarily. He may just say, in this situation, I recommend X. But he would notify us if there was a conflict of interest.
Dr. Cash, when we had before...
As any attorney would have to do.
When Chuck Cagle was lawyer before, was he a lawyer for the city then? Do you know?
Mr. Cagle, yes, was.
Yes, he was.
Yes, he was.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I do want to reiterate what Mr. Smith said. It was an excellent packet. It was put together extremely well and very comprehensive. So thank you, Ms. Lee and Mr. Bryson.
Well, I did help some. I did. Amanda Lee called every reference on the paper. She called, and she talked, and she talked. I did help. I did make some of the score, and I do have opinions, but she did all this paperwork, and she deserves credit. Not... She's not saying... I'm not saying who she for. I'm just saying she put the work in.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, Liz, will you call the roll? And remember, you vote for either Scott Bennett or Chuck Cagle.
Ms. Nancy Kason?
Chuck Cagle.
Rachel Owens?
Chuck Cagle.
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Who?
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Chuck Cagle.
Mr. Allen Smith?
Chuck Cagle.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
This isn't necessarily against Chuck Cagle. Again, it's just, in my opinion, I just see a bit of a conflict. And with that, I would vote Scott Bennett.
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Chuck Cagle.
Ms. Vicky Beatty?
Chuck Cagle.
Six for Chuck Cagle and one for Scott Bennett. Chuck Cagle has... Is recommended.
Okay. Now, Mr. Cagle has received a majority based on the recommendation between Mr. Bennett and Mr. Cagle. At this time, we will vote on the original motion to retain Mr. Cagle as the board attorney for Bradley County Schools. This is the official motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a second. Liz, will you call the roll?
Ms. Rachel Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
Before I cast my vote again, I would just like to reiterate the fact that I do appreciate all the work that the committee put into this, and the fact that I do support the board and their majority. But again, I would vote no on this one.
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Vicky Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Kason?
Yes.
Six yeses, one no. Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to talk about... I need a motion for the executive committee to work with Mr. Cagle to draft an engagement letter to be presented at the December board meeting for the purpose of retaining a board attorney. So I need a motion for a letter of engagement.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we have a letter of engagement by the executive committee in reference to Chuck Cagle.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and any discussion?
Who's executive committee?
The executive committee is the chairman of the board and the director of schools. Any other questions? Liz, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Kason?
Yes.
Ms. Vicky Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Allen Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Seven yeses. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is policy review. Amanda Lee?
Thank you. The first policy that we have up for review is policy four point four zero six, use of internet. There was a recent law change, and the Teen Social Media Act specifies that limits that must be in place for district internet use regarding age-appropriate content and protection for personal information. This new law also requires that districts prevent students from accessing social media platforms on district-provided internet unless expressly authorized by a teacher for educational purposes. It is recommended that we adopt the TSBA sample policy with the highlighted changes. So at this time, I would make a motion that we approve policy four point four zero six on first reading.
Okay, I have a motion to approve policy four point four zero six. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for Ms. Lee? Liz, will you call the roll?
Mr. Allen Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Vicky Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Kason?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. Motion carries.
Thank you. The last policy is policy six point three zero three, questioning students and searches. There was recent law change... Changes that there's a new training requirement for school personnel who may conduct searches of students. Going forward, any searches of students must be carried out by a school resource officer, a school security officer, or a school administrator who has completed the state-required training. Public Chapter two forty-four requires the Department of Education to develop this training. And so our policy had not been updated, this particular policy, since two thousand and seven. So... And ours was quite long. So we went through this and we're back and forth on the phone with TSBA. I also appreciate and thank Mr. Zach Pike, Patrick Spangler and his staff, along with Jeremy Jones and his staff, who met and went over this policy to make sure that it covered everything that we felt like was needed from their school perspective, since they are actually the ones that, for the majority of the time, are conducting those searches.
And what is the policy number?
It is six point three zero three. It's...
Thank you.
Yes, I think it's listed as six point six zero three on the...
Okay, but it's six point three zero.
Yes, six point three zero three. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve policy six point three zero three on first reading.
I have a motion to approve policy six point three zeros three. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for Ms. Lee? Liz, will you call the roll?
Ms. Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Kason?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. Motion carries.
Thank you. Announcements. November the thirteenth through the sixteenth is the TSBA Leadership Conference and Annual Convention for the School Board. And we want to recognize Lake Forest Middle School Revolution Show Choir, who will be performing on November the sixteenth. They applied with TSBA, and I know they had to go through an interview process. They had to send, I think, tapes or what did they do?
There was an application process.
Okay.
We needed to have some details.
Okay, and there were several people who participated from across the state, and Lake Forest Middle School was chosen, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing them.
We wanted to be in there.
Thank you.
The public might need to know what's going to cost... What's it going to cost us for you to... For this honor. You're going to get... But it's going to cost money, right? And you've been raising a lot of money over the last...
We have. We have, okay? Dr. Cash did a great job to us, helping us with our housing. Because we wanted the kids to have the experience to stay in the facility, because we have a cursel there on Saturday evening. And then... But, you know, transportation costs, we're going to be somewhere there around three thousand, three thousand or so dollars.
And I think you have to be there bright and early on Sunday morning.
So do we.
Yes, we do. But then November the twenty-fourth is Stockpile Staff Development Day. Schools will be closed. November the twenty eighth... Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-fifth, parent-teacher conferences, schools will be closed. November the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth is Thanksgiving break. Offices and schools will be closed. November the eighteenth is a Board of Education Work Session Meeting. December the eleventh is a Board of Education Regular Meeting. And with some additional announcements that she would like to make.
Yes, we would just like to extend an invitation to the board members and to Dr. Cash to join us for the Tennessee Department of Travel's Pink Flower Review. That will take place on Thursday, November twentieth, at one o'clock at Charleston Elementary. We would love to have you guys come out and support that.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Kason, I know you typically look at the arts. Is there anything that you'd like to highlight?
Yes, ma'am. We had Aladdin Junior at Lake Forest last weekend, and it was awesome. I sat between the grandmother of the genie and the grandfather of Aladdin. Both of them behaved very nicely. The program was wonderful. And I do want to thank Dr. Jones and Mr. Stevenson, because you all have allowed people to come use your auditoriums. Doesn't necessarily have to be your students doing it, because I've been to see Shrek at Walker Valley and also then Aladdin there, but also saw Annie Junior at Lake Forest. So thank you all for allowing these other schools to use your auditoriums for these presentations, because I think it's great for the kids to be on the big stage.
Yes.
And they love being on the big stage. So thank you all so much. And we do have other Black Foxes coming up in February. We're going to... I'm going to get to see Shrek again. And others will be coming up after that, so I'll try to keep you all posted.
That's nice. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bryson?
I went to see, me and my wife and Ms. Beatty, went to see Aladdin on the...
You went Friday night or Thursday night, yeah.
And we sat by the grandmother of the genie, which you could argue who was... I thought Aladdin and Jasmine were fantastic. My wife and I, we go to Disney World. I want to see. I always want to see Jasmine. But I'm telling you, her granddaughter was excellent, too, the three of them. And they had people that were fabulous, that could have stole, got Best Supporting Actor, could have had a tour teaser. They were great. It was great for elementary schools. It was class A. I'm sure the other schools are doing the same. I know Walker Valley does, and I know Bradley did, because I know both those people, and they're excellent. But I want to say one more thing about our work session. I want to... They... I asked about, we need to talk to the commission about money, whatever. Are we... Is it on the agenda? If it's not, I'm going to make sure that we discuss... Talk about that. Are we going to discuss for once and all, for all, what we're going to do about the Blue Springs property? Are we going to... Are we going to try to build on it, which some people say we should? Are we going to... Is it enough property? And what are the pros and cons, and will we have that information?
Okay, before we move there, does anyone else have an announcement? Thanks, Mr. Bryson. But now we will move on to agenda items for the next board meeting. The next board meeting is the work session. So, Mr. Bryson, are you asking that that be placed on the agenda?
I figure it's... Is it not part of... I'm not saying I'm far against it, but it needs to be discussed.
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, well, I was going to request that we add that item to the work session or discussion, but thank you, Mr. Bryson.
Okay, anything else that you... Now, this is the November eighteenth work session.
Is that at five o'clock?
Five o'clock here in the boardroom.
Over here?
Yes.
Okay, November the eighteenth at five o'clock in the central office boardroom. Okay, then, anything else?
I'm sorry, Ms. Beatty, I have one other thing, and Mr. Spangler can probably help me with this. Every year, Bradley Drama does the best little Christmas pageant ever, which is absolutely phenomenal. And I've seen it, I think, the last four years. And I have that date as Sunday the seventh. Two performances, two and seven. Is there a Saturday performance, Mr. Spangler?
You're supposed to be on the spot ready.
Yeah, put a man on the spot, will you? She's a sweetheart, but she's... I don't know where she came from.
December fourteenth.
Yes.
At two and seven?
I'll have to give you the story about my oldest son.
Listen, I got the date.
Okay. Okay, that's... That's okay. I just... It's a really cute little show. It lasts about forty minutes. Like I say, I've seen it four years running, and it's still the same show, but it's still cute.
Yeah, December the fourteenth is a Sunday.
Yes, I've got it on my calendar on the seventh, at two and seven, but it might be on the fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth.
Somebody needs to find out.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's the fifth and the twelfth.
Now, it is that... You were right, but that's at ten o'clock in the morning. She does that for our elementary schools to attend. Yes, yes.
Mr. Spangler, did your sister just show you up? Do we need to change the principal of the year to Brittany?
Okay, I'm thoroughly confused, but I do want to reiterate a work session for the board on November the eighteenth, and the next regular meeting is on December the eleventh. If there is not anything else, this meeting's adjourned.